To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we're all standing, if we just spend a moment, we bow our heads. Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance here tonight, as we do every night. We wish for your blessings for 2018, for our families, loved ones, for our service members, our public safety officials. We ask for your guidance as we enter the new year 2018. Amen. And evacuation plans, sir, if needed, if you can review us again?
You have some to tell?
If you have a problem, two exits in the rear, and just write all my little pages. Geez, it's been a cold start to the new year, that's for sure. Okay, President's comments. I don't have many. First of all, the big one is to send our compliments to our Department of Public Works for the outstanding job that they have done in this first week of the new year. Not only with their snow removal, but their trash pickup, going with the New Year's Day holiday, and then the delay for the Thursday snowstorm, not only picking up trash on Saturday, but also on Sunday, keeping our roads as clear as possible in a major snowstorm. So, my compliments to our DPW, the staff, the director, and our town on that. Other than that, I have no further President's comments at this time. Going right now to the next item on the agenda. We have the approval of the Town Council minutes, both the December 11th meeting and the approval of the Town Council minutes for the December 18th, 2017 meeting. We have them in front of us. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mrs. Carlson.
Page 22 of the minutes.
Of December 11th?
Yeah, well, they're actually...
Okay.
Page 22 of the agenda items, not page 22 of the agenda. That's page 7. You got that? 22.
22.
Okay. The discussion we had regarding the truck that...I don't want to call it a money truck. Vacuum truck. That sounds right. At the top, I know I asked if Kevin had already done any applications, and I thought he said no, and then they were due by the end of the year. In the first paragraph, it says, "We're not committed to anything. We haven't done any grant applications." I'm confused. Did he...have we been approved for this grant?
No, we have not. We have tentatively been designated $200,000. Before they can award the money, we had to agree to how it would be financed. We also had to agree to the...there's one other item. But we have not gone out and we haven't purchased the truck. That is still yet to come to the council. I believe we have applied for the grant, but I don't believe it has been awarded yet.
So would we have to enter into this lease purchase agreement, and then we would get reimbursed, if we got reimbursed by the grant? I mean, we're not going to do anything, correct? Unless we find out the grant is a boat?
Let me look into it. I don't have all the answers in front of me, and I'm stumbling with the information. But let me look into it, and I'll see if I can get that information back to the council.
Because I just...I'm still having an issue with this. I know I voted aye on this, but honestly, I'm having an issue with this truck issue not going as an item for the voters to vote on. I know that whole lease purchase, we found a way to work around it last time with the sweeper. I voted no on that. I don't feel comfortable with this yet, even though I...you know, Kevin does say that we could pay for it for what it costs us for a contract every year. It's just a very big purchase for us versus approving a contract. So, I think I'd like a little bit more clarification in here. I know we discussed a lot, and I know we can't always...obviously, we're not going to give verbatim here, because there's no way you can do that. But I think getting some answers to these questions would be good. Anybody else? Nobody?
If you could email me that, and I'll get it. I'll send the response back to the Town Council.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the minutes, the last two meetings?
I'd like to. Yes.
Okay.
Same meeting, same page, page 22 of 69. It says, "All voted," and this is regarding the truck also. All voted aye. I did not vote for that. Actually, motion was made to approve. The question was, "All in favor?" The ayes have it. There was no question, anyone opposed. So, I did not vote if I had been asked, if it had been...the question had been posed, anyone opposed, I would have opposed. I would have voted no. So, I did not vote yes for that truck. You can watch the video. It's on video if you want to see how the motion, how it went.
Do we have to re-vote? Do we have to do another vote on it? Solicitor Gorman?
Well, how many did you vote?
No, it wasn't Mr. ...
I wasn't here at the last meeting.
No, Dave Daghestine was here.
Oh, he was here.
So, I can't say I counted.
So, there were four ayes.
But if there were four ayes, then that's a majority at Cary.
Okay, but I just wanted, like, you know, all the ayes, you know, but it was...
It was material.
Okay.
Okay.
But I just wanted, I did not vote.
All right. All right, so any other comments on the minutes for the 11th and the 18th? If not, motion to approve? Oh, I think we already got that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Three approved, two against, approving the minutes. All right, next. We have council updates, I guess.
No, no, we have minutes from December 18th.
That's what we just approved.
No, we approved our regular minutes. Then you have the joint committee meeting on the 18th.
Right. That's what we just approved. The 11th and the 18th.
Oh, you took them together?
Yes.
Oh, so sorry.
That's all right. Okay, let's move right along. Council updates, Mr. McGee.
Yes.
District 3, please.
I also want to comment, unfortunately, our DPW had to go out on Christmas Day, which took time away from their families. So, that was a good job. We got hit with a good storm this past week, and I didn't get any complaints in my district about it, so it was good on that. Also, this coming Saturday, we're going to have a Town Council, a district meeting. We have coffee and donors, myself and Councilman LaVassan here are going to do it. It's going to start at nine o'clock in the chambers here for people to come here and to express some concerns and discuss what's going on in the town and some ideas. It's going to be like a think tank. We're going to...it's going to be done in a constructive meeting to talk about different ideas. So, I welcome anybody from District 2 and District 3 that wants to come in and please show up and, like I said, have some coffee and no one's bothered. Thank you.
Actually, the last one, I didn't invite anybody from town, so I'm not...and then we're people from other districts as well, too.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm not involved in that. Yes, okay.
Okay, Mrs. Bacon, District 5, update.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Carlson, District 1.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out in this crappy weather. I mean, after all, did we really want to be here for this? No. Okay, several things. First of all, the zoning board hearing for the gun range is Wednesday, two days from now. It's at the high school, seven o'clock. If you're interested, please be there. I think it's going to be a meeting at the high school. Okay? Oh, and also, that night, for some reason, there is a sewer subcommittee. And I know I've asked Mr. Waters if we could find a way that two town meetings don't take place on the same night. Now, this is a special zoning board meeting. I realize that. But they had already said a month and a half ago that they were doing it two days from now. So, maybe the sewer subcommittee could have changed. But I think we need to have some sort of master calendar that we don't conflict, because there may be people that wanted to go to both. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, next. Oh, the December 18th Joint School Committee Council and State Legislators Meeting. It was okay for my...this is all my personal opinion, but I'd like to say that I know we've discussed follow-ups from that meeting. I mean, we seem to have that meeting once a year. Most of us attend it. It's right before Christmas. We're going to change that in '19 to make it January, because 18 is the election year, and some of people may not still be here by then. So, it's kind of a lame duck thing. We don't want to be bothered with it. But we never have a follow-up. And you and I have talked about it, and I think it's really important that, like Senator Ractakis is here this evening, and the discussion issues that maybe we've asked the legislators to look into, the school department or the council, at some point, we need maybe a 30-day time period where then we get a report back, you know? So, we're not just meeting and chit-chatting for a couple hours. And I also would like to urge that we do have public comment. I know we were shot down again this year, but I think this is the opportunity for all three groups, legislative groups are sitting there. We need the public to be able to make a comment, ask questions, and have input into this meeting. You know, that's just...seems to me to be no-brainer. For District 4...I mean, District 1, sorry. District 1, it's been quite a year. It's been quite a year for the entire town. Did a lot of thinking over the holidays about...the word I come up with is that we're imploding, whether it's sewers, it's taxes, it's schools, it's town, it's wind turbines and solar power plants. I would like to urge this Town Council this year and give ourselves maybe, I don't know, three months. But I think we need a strategic plan in 2018, because I've asked the question, "Where are we going?" And I think it's important that we look forward in town, not just for a three-year budget, but what's our plan? Where are we going? Where do we want to see growth? Where do we want to see businesses coming in, welcoming new families, subdivisions, new homes? We are right now supposed to be having a comprehensive plan review committee. We approved the finances in two different lots. We don't even have a committee yet. What is going on with the comp plan committee? Where are they? They haven't been chosen. I know it's in the hands of the planning commission. Well, what the heck are they doing with it? Where's the committee? Do you have an update?
As far as I know, it's on the agenda for the 31st of, for the planning commission to go over the applicants. I believe there are 11 applicants for the commission.
Well, it's been on twice before, at least, if not three or four times, and nothing has happened. We've wasted six or seven months at this point. We're paying a consulting firm for nothing. I certainly hope we're going to get our money's worth, because our comp plan is out of compliance with the state.
Our planning director is encouraging the planning commission to move forward with the applicant reviews, and I know we...it was probably two months ago now that we advertised for applicants, maybe three months ago. Was it longer?
Longer. And I know several people who have put applications in. But I think this Town Council has an obligation, because of everything that's been going on, to come up with a strategic plan. As you and I have discussed, it's time. Where are we going? I know Mr. LaVassan here has always been concerned about economic growth and businesses in town, and I think it's time we do something. We...you know, I'm trying to protect District 1, Western Coventry Green. Well, if we don't comp plan, then the last thing that the planning commission approved is in direct violation of the comprehensive plan. And something needs to be done about it. And I think that's probably it for January.
Okay, thank you for District 1 report. Mr. LaVassan here.
District 2, Happy New Year, everyone. I'd just like to reiterate again, our meeting, Town Hall session on Saturday morning. Just going to be myself, I'll host that, and token to anybody who would like to come in. And let's talk about some solutions and some things that we've got in front of us for 2018.
Okay. Well, we also...Mr. Waters, you might want to just reemphasize, I know I've read it a few times, that you and Mr. Levis are going to be meeting on January 20th, which is before our next council meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Just to reemphasize that, I know I've seen it noted several times in the Kent County Times.
We are...we're meeting at the Parks and Recreation Facility building on Flat River Road.
And that's in the morning also?
Yes, that's from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Okay.
It'll probably last longer than that. There's no agenda. The previous open forums that we've had, we've gotten up there, introduced ourselves, and then we open up to questions from the residents. There's no restrictions on which town residents can attend. All it's district, it's town-wide, no specific district. And it's just a listening session for the Town Manager and the School Superintendent to have direct connection to the residents of the town.
Good, thank you.
Mr. President, I just forgot if I may just add something real quick.
January 20th is what, Saturday morning, right?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. McGee.
I know a couple of months back, I did say that I was going to put an article on a reminder to remind the people. And unbeknown to me, it used to be Saturday afternoon was the deadline, and it's now Friday afternoon. I did not get it at the time, so Mr. LaVassan here is going to put it on social media and like urge anybody to tell their friends about it and get it up, because it will not unfortunately be having a reminder this week. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And there is a matter later on concerning District 4 that we'll get to, so I won't emphasize that now in any report, but that's later on in the agenda. So, that's the council district updates. Next, we have Item 5. Mr. Waters, if you'd like to lead into that, page 35, I guess?
Sure.
How it starts off?
The next item on the agenda is a discussion and action for a resolution waiving Chapter 56 bidding requirements to approve Citron Cooperman and Company to audit the town sewer enterprise fund and program. This was a request originally brought to town by Councilman Bacon to have an audit of the sewer program and the sewer fund. I heard from a number of other Town Council members who are interested in this as well to not only look at the finances, but look how the program is implemented in general, look at all the problems that have come up in the past, and help us solve our sewer issues with the finances and with the program, how we have it laid out, and propose some solutions. So, I have representatives from Citron Cooperman here tonight. If there's any questions or additions, what I have distributed to the Town Council over the last couple of weeks is a proposal that they submitted. Additionally, in the proposal, it has specifically what they will be looking at. But at this time, if the council has questions, feel free.
I do actually have a request.
Sure.
Given the magnitude of this program and the several requests that I have made for a forensic audit and a performance audit of the entire sewer program and its financials, I would really like to have public comment regarding this before we make any type of a decision tonight. So, if we could extend public comment for this before we make a vote tonight.
I'll leave that up to the council.
Okay, I understand the request. Any other...we have the resolution in front of us. We have volumes of information. And I just have another question, the Town Manager. This organization that you have...you've met with, correct?
Correct.
And they have...
Bob Tebow, the finance director, myself, and our councilist met with them to go over what we felt were areas that they needed to examine, what's laid out in the proposal.
Yes, and they're also, as far as the, you know, purchase agreement or the master purchase agreement.
Yep.
So, and we have the list of the other cities and towns where they've worked, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Well, in other words, I'm not saying public comment isn't important, but this is a recommendation from the Town Manager to the Town Council for a vote. And it's clearly stated what they're going to bring to the table, the relative cost to do the work, not to exceed $37,000. So, individual comments, I don't see necessarily the benefit of it, but I'm not going to say no initially. And I'll entertain a few questions regarding the proposal that we have in front of us as elected council people. So, I guess, do you have any other comments, Vice President?
What I would like to do is, I mean, we probably have some questions for Citron Cooperman.
Right, well, that also...
They were brought here to...
Okay, well, maybe we should start that way, because maybe by talking with them, if they're, you know, they may answer questions before others ask their questions. I think that's an excellent idea, and, you know, thought of that. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Maybe you could introduce them, Mr. Waters?
Sure. First, we reached out to Mr. Jeremiah by email, and...
Good evening.
Miss...yeah, sorry, I forgot your last name, and I'm in front of me.
Yeah, Colin Beck.
Colin Beck. Both with Citron Cooperman. And actually, Citron Cooperman, before it became Citron Cooperman, do you want to give a little bit of background about your history in Rhode Island?
Sure. Before we join Citron Cooperman in September...
The mic's not on.
Yeah, you could just talk directly into the mic.
Before we...
Or bend it down. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, before we joined Citron Cooperman in September of 2016, we were known in the community as LGCND LLP. So, and LGCND was a regional firm here located in Providence. Citron Cooperman is a top 25 firm within the U.S., primarily with offices in the Northeast. So, our experience that you see in our proposal includes our experience not only with Citron Cooperman, but with LGCND. So, we've been servicing governmental entities, including component units of the state of Rhode Island, as well as local municipalities and their component units for about 35 years. So, we provide, you know, audit services, consulting services, and a variety of different services. We also work with the Office of Internal Audit of the state of Rhode Island, assisting them with performing performance audits, as well as internal audits of several other departments and/or component units of the state. So, Mitie Armbeck is a partner with Citron Cooperman as I am also.
All right, thank you. Anything to add as far as...
Certainly. So, I know it's in the proposal as well, but I started out my career in the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, in really setting accounting standards for state and local governments. I'm also a certified fraud examiner, as well as being a certified public accountant. So, I do...and I actually head up the litigation support practice as well, and forensic support practice in the Braintree office of Massachusetts as well. I'm an elected official, so I feel your pain, which I understand, you know, is a difficult decision, a difficult job that you have in front of you. And what I think you're really looking for is to get objective information based upon facts and situations that we can obtain from the information that you have in the past, so that you can make a better decision moving forward. That is, you know, part of what we're proposing to you in our proposal, as well as to give you that information, to maybe try to alleviate some of the concerns or uncertainties that have happened in the program that dates back for over 10 years at this point.
Okay, and you're located with Bossett Street in Providence?
So, my office is in Braintree, Massachusetts.
Well, that's what I was going to ask next.
But we Bossett, yes.
I see.
Yeah, and our office is in...
I see, okay. So, it's sort of like a regional group, at least the reach-out is. And could I ask that you...not that it really matters, are you elected in Rhode Island or Massachusetts?
I'm elected in Massachusetts.
Massachusetts.
So, I'm a selectman, one of three, in the town of Lakeville, Massachusetts.
What city?
Lakeville.
Oh, Lakeville, all right, very good.
And, you know, in that capacity, I've dealt with, you know, we had issues regarding our water program, our enterprise fund as well. We ended up selling our water tower to the neighboring city of Taunton after doing an investigation of the cost related to it, realizing that the town was unable to look at it from a sustainability standpoint and maintain that debt service payment.
All right, very good, thank you. Questions of the individual council people of our guests tonight? Anyone? Yes, Mrs. Bacon?
Hi, welcome. I know that this is going to be a busy time for you coming up, being CPAs, this is going to be your very busy time. So, I have been the council person that has been requesting a forensic audit and a performance audit of the entire sewer program. Your proposal that I have, the proposed services, I don't see anywhere in here where it states "audit." I see it in our resolution, but this is basically what I am seeing. You're going to assist, you're reviewing documents, and you just said about 10 years. This program has been in effect more than 10 years. It needs to go from the very beginning to where we are right now. I also noticed that you would be reviewing Town Council minutes where there's discussion during Town Council, voted upon matters related to towns' existing sewer projects made available to you. We had presentations at there. I also am concerned that you're not reviewing all of the sewer subcommittee minutes. That is not in here either. I just see that this is very narrowed. So, is this a true forensic audit and performance audit of the entire sewer program? You can get that done in three months, because what I'm reading here, this does not look like a forensic audit and a performance audit of the entire program and all the financials.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Bacon.
Part of what I wanted tonight was to get some feedback from the council, if there is additional items that you'd like for them to review. This is also why it's coming before the council as well.
And of course, the more you investigate, the more costly it would be and the time consuming and everything else, which is all relative. But again, this is the reason that's here before us, that individual council members make possible suggestions that will eventually get voted on, you know, whether we go that way or not, and whether we want to spend that kind of money or not, according to our Town Manager and our Finance Director and our five elected council people. That's why we're here tonight on that.
I understand that, but I have also, for about six months, have been requesting to have this put on the agenda. I don't know why it came on the agenda now, and now it just seems like this is going to be a rushed job, and I want to make sure if we're going to do this, we need to do this right. We have millions of dollars we have spent for only one, 640 people to be hooked up to sewers. We are looking at a lot of money here. We need to do this right, and if we're going to do it, we need to go from the very beginning to where we are now. And having... And what I'm seeing here, it's just an overview. They're going to be looking at Weston and Sampson, you know, getting information from them. We already have all of that. I want someone to come in, unbiased, independent, to look from the beginning to the end, and I don't think that can be accomplished from now until mid-April. I really don't...I don't see that in here at all. And like I said, I don't see audit. I don't see them mentioning anything about using the Yellow Book standards. I'm just a little concerned that this is not what the town should be spending money on right now. I think we need a full audit. And is this a full audit?
Go ahead.
So, there's a kind of a misconception about what an audit generally entails and exactly the costs associated with the audit. And if I step back to just in general with professional standards, there are a lot of checklists involved in an audit. So, there's a lot of things in your typical town audit that you're paying for that add zero value to what you're actually receiving for information. What was presented to us was a request to have exactly what you're looking for, and what I had mentioned, and I apologize if it didn't come... And what I had mentioned, and I apologize if it didn't come through the microphone, but I said over ten years for the duration of the program. Because we were told that it went back to, I believe it was nineteen ninety-nine, so it was well over...
Nineteen eighty-three.
So, I think when we were looking at the information that was presented, it was maybe from the last time that we had, maybe, I know town council was telling us something about nineteen ninety-nine. I'm not giving those right now. But regardless, it's, the difference between having an audit and a forensic audit would be astronomical in terms of cost, and the value that you would be receiving would not be worth it. So, I think in the timeline for it as well would be much longer than what we're proposing. So, what we're asking of you and through this proposal is really to find out exactly what it is that you're looking for for the review of the sewer program. That encompasses looking through all of the documentation that is available out there, but also going through and digging deep into the general ledger and looking at all the receipts that have come through, looking at the application of payments, making sure that funds that have been, that are designated for sewer assessments have actually gone through the sewer assessment debt service that they're supposed to go through. We're looking at the rates and taking a look at those to make sure that they're appropriate, that they're sustainable, that any past, looking at the IMA with West Warwick, to look at all of the clauses in there, to see what are the things that you're actually paying for that you may not know that you're paying for, or you may know it, but are you reviewing those items as well? It's an overview. When I talk about the forensic side too, the issue with the forensic side is that if you do dig, you kind of need to have an overview first, I guess I would say, to see if there is anything from a forensic perspective. And I guess I'd like to know what the goal is from the forensic side versus an investigation looking into the detail of all of the history of it. Because I think that people get a little hung up with blame and placing blame with the forensic side. And what our job is here is to present you with all of the information in a well-organized format, so that you can make an informed decision about where you were, where you are, and where you're going with this program.
Okay, and that, I do appreciate that. But I think, like you said, with the scope of work that is here, it is just, it keeps mentioning current project. It's all current, current, current. We, I have to understand, I mean, we had several projects. There have been a lot of money that, I mean, just like the Anthony Mill. I mean, I don't, that's not even mentioned in here, looking at what happened there. There are, it appears to me you're being narrowed to one pathway. I mean, it talks about creating a position for the sewer, you know, for a sewer, I can't find it right here right at the moment, but a, like a sewer superintendent. I'd actually, and this isn't for you, but I don't know who on the town side, I mean, I have been requesting this audit, and I was never contacted that this was going to be on the agenda. I've asked several times. It would have been, I don't know, did any council members help write the proposed services, you know, I don't know?
No, this was actually, the council is notified in my recent report to the council about the possibility of this coming forward. I asked for counsel to put through my reports. I heard from yourself, as well as, I don't recall from anywhere else, but other council members saying, maybe an audit's a good idea. I heard that a forensic audit is a bit much, but maybe an audit to help us find solutions. I know both Bob Tebow and I feel that it's appropriate in the fact that we're overwhelmed with other work and we can't really sit down and plot out a proper course to help resolve the issue. So, having this outside help is also beneficial to the staff as well.
So, I guess my question to you, when you do, say, just a performance audit of an entire sewer program and all of its financials going back from nineteen eighty-three to the present, during your busiest season, you can get that done in four months? Or is it more where it usually takes twelve months? I mean, what is the normal timeframe for doing a very detailed performance audit? Because what I'm reading here is you're going to come back and give us something, and I don't even know what you're giving us in April.
If I may.
I know, I would like to hear their answer.
This is Jeremiah, you're first, then Councilwoman McGee.
A performance audit really, you know, takes a look at a variety of different things, including the objectives of, say, for example, a government grant.
Can you speak into the mic so everyone can hear?
You can tilt it down if you want.
The objectives of a government grant, the objectives of a particular program. So, a performance audit encompasses more than what's included in here. We, so, a performance audit is different than the consulting engagement we included here. And also is required, one of the things that you mentioned was, you know, a performance audit, you need to see it referenced in the course of government audit standards.
So, this really is not a performance audit?
This is not a true performance audit.
No, it's not, and that's what I have been requesting.
Based upon our understanding of the objectives after meeting of both Mr. Waters, Tebow, and Mr. Warren, was that the concern was really more to understand the activities that have occurred related to this sewer project. How, you know, how some of the things happened, how the construction costs were, how the construction costs were funded, how the assessments were determined, and how the sewer user fees are, you know, determined, to understand the relationship between the town of Braintree and the town of West Warwick and the provisions of the IMA. So, it was, it's not as encompassing as a performance audit.
But I think this is what this town needs, is a performance audit, because it doesn't even mention about you even reviewing any of the sewer subcommittee meeting minutes in here at all. I mean, it's...
And that was probably our oversight in terms of just mentioning the town council minutes and not sewer subcommittee minutes. Certainly, we look at...
But, you know, within the scope, you follow the scope of work. So, if it's not in there, you're not going to do it. So, I mean, that's why it needs to be very detailed, and that's why I'm just so concerned that it is such a short period of time. Are you going to be able to get all, you know, and are we going to word it as a performance audit?
Okay, Mr. Warren.
I just want to add a little perspective here for Councilwoman Bacon.
Please do.
There is no...
What? Oh, that was horrible.
But it's the way you said it.
Oh, horrible.
This is what we've got, this is what we've asked for, this is what we've got to vote on. Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Well, I was...
I was being spoke to you.
I was at the meeting with...
I am listening.
Excuse me. I was at the meeting with the representatives from Citron Cooperman. And they are going to examine the assessments. And I told them outright, I thought, just my own impression, having lived in the town and followed the trials and tribulations of the town and sewer system and many other things for the last twenty-plus years, that the prevailing wisdom is that the assessments were never enough. And the assessments originate where? In the sewer subcommittee. They are advisory only, but they do make recommendations on what the assessments are supposed to be. And they are going to examine the assessments. And if they do that, they're going to examine the sewer subcommittee. The mere fact that they didn't say it explicitly doesn't mean that the path isn't going to lead there.
But it doesn't matter, it still needs to be in the scope of work.
But I totally agree, but it has to be looked at. The assessments, the woefully insufficient assessments, I believe, are the reason why the system is in trouble. And that's why people are mad now, because their assessments are high, because they believe we're trying to play catch-up. I think this is precisely the type of examination that the people at Braintree want.
I think the people want a performance audit of the entire program.
We can label it that.
I mean, we don't want it to be... How we got to where we are. This is the problem, Nick, and, you know, I...
I think we're, I think we're exalting terms over the substance of what they're going to do. I think you can call it anything you want, but...
No, no, no.
I know, that's the...
How can you call it anything you want?
All right, a council person, a council listener talking. Please, audience, can you keep quiet?
I mean, right on the cover page, right on the cover page, it says, "Proposal to Provide Professional Service Sewer Program Consulting." I mean, you would think on the cover page, it would say, "The Sewer Performance Audit."
They've said it's not a performance audit.
I know, they have, but as...
It says right here it is.
So, don't go and say, "This is what I've asked for." This isn't. I've asked for a performance audit, unbiased, independent performance audit. And I don't know if we, as you say, let this go. Can you get a performance audit done by mid-April?
Mr. McGee? You had comments?
Assume no.
I read through this thing, and I think it's really good, and it's a great start. I agree, I want to see everything looked at, absolutely everything looked at.
We all do.
Well, yes, we do. I mean, we absolutely don't want anything, you know, not. Everything uncovered, this program goes back years and years, and we want to make sure we get to the bottom of it. I think, I like what's in here, I do. You guys are going to go through the whole thing. I don't want you to feel lushed. I don't know how the deadline came in three months. I don't care if it takes six months. I want everything looked at also. I want to make sure, and she's at a point, it is your busy time. So, you know, make sure that this whole program is looked at, and everything is not omitted. I don't care what you want to call it, a performance audit or not, but I think by the information that you've presented to us, obviously, a sewer subcommittee has to be looked at, and like Nick explained, and I'm sure it won't be overlooked. But I think it's a great start. I think it's going to give us the answers we want. I think for us to be debating it now is a little early. I think we'd be more, have to debate it, and more have to have public comment when we get results from this, to see if there's anything that we really don't agree with. But you guys are going to be presenting facts to us, and that's what we need. We need unbiased facts presented to us. And I think it's going to be good. I think we're a little premature arguing about it now. I just want to make sure that everything is looked at and nothing is overlooked. But, I mean, a performance audit, I don't know, you know, what the difference is, but let's start out with what you're doing. Let's give us some answers. We may have a lot of our questions answered by the time we receive your audit, or whatever you want to call it. I appreciate, I like the way it was written, presented to us. And I guess I don't want you to feel pressured. I want this thing to be completed. And I know, Mr. Graham Waters, if we have any issues with, it could take longer than three months. It's not a problem with me. I want a good job done, you know?
The goal with the April deadline was to try to get it completed before the budget season really kicks into high gear, so we can, if we need to take into consideration financial issues that need to be considered with the upcoming budget.
But here again, we still want to throw a job done, and if it can't be, then we'll address that when it comes. I mean, it's, we want to make sure we get to the history and the issues and the problems of this sewer program. Thank you.
Could I ask one more question? Could you explain what this is and the difference between a performance audit? What is proposed here in a performance audit? What are the differences?
Sure. A performance audit is actually performed in accordance with a set of professional standards. So, you get a report, and the report outlines what's done and defines. It's done in a set, it's done in accordance with a set of professional standards that govern exactly what the reporting format is and exactly what you're going to look at. This is a consulting engagement, because this is focused on the things that we heard or of concern to the town council in our meeting with Mr. Waters, Mr. Tebow, and Mr. Warren. Okay? It's not done in accordance with a set of professional standards, which requires...
The Yellow Book standard?
The Yellow Book standards. When we're thinking about the type of engagement and having a discussion about the type of engagement, it wasn't, the concern was really to understand what the program was, what happened in the, this sewer program, to really understand what the assessments look like, to understand what the billing looks like, to understand what the IMA, the provisions of the IMA are, and to provide information for the council to understand where it is today and some of the decisions that were made in the perspective over the years of the sewer program. A performance audit looks at objectives. It looks at things that are very specific and performs tests to determine whether, in fact, policies are being followed, requirements are being met. So, that isn't necessarily going to provide you the same information that this consulting engagement is, is going to provide. It's not. It's really going to, it's going to look at the program and it's going to say, what is the objective of the sewer program? The objective of the sewer program might be X, Y, and Z. We'll test against those objectives, but we won't necessarily go through a financial analysis to understand what the costs were for the sewer, how the sewer assessment was based, whether the sewer assessments were sufficient to cover the costs of the... To look at the underlying agreements, to understand the costs that are being incurred by the town under the IMA. A performance audit will not do that.
So, I guess what you're saying is a consulting service, which you're giving here, and then we need to discuss a performance audit to this also?
I think, you know, one thing I just want to clarify too is that, you know, the consulting engagements are still done under a set of professional standards. We are required as CPAs and under our own professional set of standards and our professional conduct, that everything is done in accordance with the basic framework, which is how we have to operate as CPAs. The difference really between the performance audit is going to give you a piece of paper that might not answer your concerns. If you have questions along the way of specific details related to, did the assessment cover the costs related to the bond that went out in two thousand and three? You know, that is not part of the objective of a performance audit. So, when we looked at this, we actually never really talked about what, we didn't really talk about the performance audit as a component. We talked about what would the engagement look like that would give you the best information so that you can make a decision. And again, when you lay around the performance audit, you're paying for a lot of things that I don't necessarily think that would help you make that decision, because we're checking boxes and putting it in a box itself. With a consulting engagement, it can be more fluid. So, if there's something, and we've included in the proposal, meetings with town councils, so that if there is something that we've found during the course of our procedures that we can bring up to you to say, is this where you want it to go? This is what we're finding. These are the regular updates. That's not exactly what you get with a performance audit. The performance audit is much more limited in its scope, and we are only testing to certain program specifics as opposed to allowing you to kind of craft exactly what it is that you want. And again, they're both done in accordance with professional standards. We're issuing a report on that that we're standing behind to say, this is the information that we were looking at, this is exactly what we found, these are the assumptions that went into it, these are the facts that went into it, and this is what you have to make your decision with. Versus the performance audit that's going to say the program was in accordance with its objective or not.
Councilwoman LaBosse, thank you for that information.
Thank you very much. I see a lot of towns and, you know, the units of, areas that you've done this type of work for. Is there, you know, in the comparable work done in other towns like what is, what is being done here? And how did they receive your results when you did that? Any specific towns in a comparable, whether it was a sewer, or whether it was something, you know, some other type of, not performance audit, but, you know, order of measure?
Sure, the cities and towns that are listed, as well as the state component units, are the towns that we've provided services for. So, the services could be consulting services. It could be helping them with accounting, it could be helping them with policies and procedures, internal control. It could also be performing audits or reviews of their financial statements. So, it's a variety of different services that we've provided to those municipalities and component units. Each engagement is very specific to a town. So, for example, if a town has asked us to provide consulting services, it's usually focused upon on something that they have a concern about. Certainly, as part of our audits of financial statements for those municipalities that have sewer funds, we've certainly understood and audited is the assessment process, the billing process, with any intermunicipal agreements that the towns might have. Your engagement doesn't necessarily align with some of the other consulting engagements that the towns have because of the uniqueness of the request for help and assistance that we've provided for those, to those communities.
Well, I like what I, what I hear that we're going to have information to make a decision as to how we move forward or whatever like that. Let's say we get to the end of this, and there are other areas of information that may be required to get, are we able to adjust the scope a little bit and go at the end of this period in order to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think Mitzi said it very well. A consulting engagement is really a fluid engagement, so we can change, we can change the scope of the services. We can, we can not do something that maybe was included in the proposal that we thought was important to do, or that the council thought was important along the way. Certainly, we can add things. We can modify the way we do the procedures. It's really an agreement between the town council and the firm in terms of what you'd like us to do as part of that engagement.
And I think part of the problem with this, with the whole thing is that we really haven't had anything that was, you know, streamlined, some, a streamlined vision as to how other than a facilities plan, but as far as accomplishing those plans. Will this information help us streamline, you know, moving, you know, forward on some of these? Again, with the information that we provide, in other words, with suggestions and consultations. Look, we think that, you know, moving in this direction will help you, you know, will help you, you know, hey, here's what you need to do to cover the costs of this, or, you know, or you'll never be able to cover the costs of this, for instance, you know. Again, with the... Again, with the possible adjustments in the agreement with the Town of West Warwick, et cetera. Those will be part of the suggestions or the, in the package there.
Right, I mean, I think that the biggest component to most of the decision-making that you're looking to do with this would be financial. And so to give you that information that specifically states what the repayment periods would look like under the current assessment rate that you have, under the current rate structure that you have, to really look at the sustainability of the actual program itself. That's the information that we're going to provide you with, with the objective information that comes in from when you were issuing bonds, how you were collecting that information. You know, we had a good conversation about how you actually do collect the information and where that information is stored, whether it's in the general fund, whether it's in its own enterprise fund. Digging through that information to try to sort it and make sure that it is going to the right spots. That's so that you can have that information so that you can make those decisions.
Thank you.
And I must say, I've looked through the list. You get the city of Fall River listed, Mr. Jeremiah, and Newport. I mean, we do have cities and towns. And all the quasi-state agencies, airport, corporation, convention center, there's some big agencies there. And all of these would attest to your competence, I assume that's why they're down here. Is that correct? And between Mr. Waters and Mr. Tebow and our town solicitor, you've met, and this is what you're presenting to us. So I'm satisfied with what you're proposing and what we need to find out so we can go from there and adjust it. I know that the council is welcome to send any more questions to the town manager. Mr. Waters, let me ask you now, what is the suggestion so we can move forward here with this proposal? What are you recommending?
Well, if, if there's things that the council would like to add or change, a deadline, or this really is something, town manager bringing the information from the town council. If you don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight and you'd like to add to the proposal, you can have, we can have Citron Cooperman go back and add whatever you'd like to add. If you feel that this is pretty good as far as accomplishing, finding out what the problems are and helping us find solutions, you can pass it tonight. Again, as I said, it's fluid. There's a provision in the resolution that says, once they hit thirty thousand, thirty-seven thousand dollars, then if they have additional work that they would like to do or the council would like to have them do, we can bring back, everybody, we can bring back before the town council to vote on additional funding for this.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I just got one, one follow-up question. You mentioned, obviously, you know, we're able to move a little bit on it. Now, as this is going along, what type of progress reports or possible things would we get in the interim that might raise other questions that we may need you to look at?
Well, I think, you know, we would be working closely with the town manager to really make sure that if there's something, there's information, new information that comes to light that we realize along the way that's going to either result in a change in the general direction, that that's when you certainly would be made aware of those potential issues. I think, you know, we got the overview as to what it is that you're looking for, but certainly there could be something that pops up in the minutes. There could be something that leads us to another direction. We're trying to contain the scope of it so that we can make it manageable. But if something actually comes up that would warrant information to you, we'll certainly be working with the town manager to get that information to you so that you can decide where you want this to go.
Great, Ms. Carlson?
Yes, thank you. This, I don't think you should take this, any of our discussions tonight personally. This is a very touchy issue, and it's no reflection on your, your firm. I do have some questions though for the town manager. It says on our agenda that this is a resolution to waive the bidding requirements for sewer audit. Why do we want to waive the bidding requirements?
So this firm participated in the state NPA master prize agreement. So they went out, they were chosen by the state's procurement process. So they've already gone through the bidding and vetting through the state's procurement branch. This allows the town to have efficiencies in purchasing because they provided more competitive pricing than we could probably get just for this whole project alone.
So were there other firms that are in this process that you looked at too?
Yes, so there.
Did they get a, did they get an email with the parameters of what we're looking for?
They did not. The way I chose Citron Cooperman was I went, there's five firms that are on the state NPA. Citron Cooperman was the lowest price of them. So that's how I chose them as to bring in for an interview. So I saw that they were the lowest price. I brought together Nick and Bob, and we sat down and discussed what the problems were and interviewed them and asked them to submit a proposal.
But if you didn't interview, don't take offense, please. If you didn't interview any other firms, then how do you know, no offense, this is the one to pick? Just be, no offense, the cost, I mean, I'm looking, personally, you know, I'm looking for financials. I want to know, obviously, we kind of can surmise where we went wrong, but where has the money gone? Where did the money from any, any grants, any federal money, state money, taxes, assessments? I don't know if this is where we're going to find out the answers to those questions. How, you know, so I'm not, no offense, I'm not comfortable, it's like when the DPW director comes in and says, only one company bid on a project. That, to me, isn't the way we should be doing this. And I don't know why we wouldn't have interviewed other firms and how much price difference was there between you guys, sorry, and then the next on the list? Or how do we know what they would have committed if we didn't give anybody parameters, other firms' parameters? Wait, I'm not done, thank you.
I didn't say anything.
I know, but you clicked. You're ready. And yes, that's why we have a town manager, but I think the town manager needs to, you know, need to look at other firms. This is a huge issue, it's probably the biggest thing that's come in front of this town and this, and a council in a long time. And I want along, and I know I agree with Mrs. Bacon, and I agree with Councilman McGee, that we need to know where the money went and where we're going to go forward. And also, I know the legislators, when we were at the meeting, they were speaking about, and maybe Senator Reptakis could speak to this, they were going to contact the auditor general to do an audit. Now, where's thirty-seven thousand dollars coming from? What fund is that coming out of? Is that out of the general fund?
Yeah, it would probably come from the contingency fund. Because again, this is not budgeted for this year.
No, it's not.
It's anticipated.
And it's a lot of money.
That's where the fund, the money would most likely come from.
Right, so we need, there's nothing out here that says where the money is coming from. And you know, on the resolution, I'd like to know where the funding is coming from. But maybe Senator Reptakis could speak to whether or not the auditor general is a possibility, and I don't think that would cost thirty-seven thousand dollars, would it? No. So perhaps we should not just, we should actually still look into that avenue and not spend money we don't really have to add on to this. So I think there's other questions that we haven't got answered, and I'm certainly not prepared to pick a firm this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Waters, you had five to choose from. You chose the lowest, I guess, price. Did you want to mention how close the other ones were? I know that this has been asked for to find out what's happening for months. And I think your goal was to get it done. Reputable company with reputable resumes and reputable towns and cities and state agencies you worked for. And I'm just wondering, you know, we could keep postponing it, keep kicking the can down the street, interview more, come out here, and then have one or two or three. You're the hired town manager. Is there any reason outside of maybe additional questions that we shouldn't go ahead and start getting this done? Because if it takes three or four months or more, if you find that's the case, I mean, we can go to twenty nineteen with this. I think thirty-seven thousand.